Let me say that again. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, July 11, 2023, here in Coachella. And let's see, before roll call, we have a script because of a director out of the office, out of areas. Prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, in that Director Bianco is in Venice, Italy, and will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Clerk Bermudas, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson will be absent for today's meeting.
Good. I'd now like to request that Director Bianco respond to the following questions. Director Bianco, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Were you, good. Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, I did.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
Okay, good. Yeah, I hope you're having a nice time over there. I can hear you well also. And just as a reminder, all votes for this meeting must be taken by roll call. Good. All right, well then, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Looking at the California flag, it's kind of in the way. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Not aware of any. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Mr. President, we will just, we have several members of the public on Zoom, and just to confirm that, we don't have anybody speaking in general public comment, I will ask that if any members of the public on Zoom would like to provide general public comment on an item that is not agendized, please use the raise hand feature at this time, and we will call on you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't see anybody here in the auditorium either. It looks like they're trying to comment. Consent calendar, I just want to note for the record that I am recusing myself on item 5E because of a neighboring of interest in real property. I don't need to leave the dyes, do I, on consent calendar?
No, unless there's any conversation, discussion on the matter, if this is approved as the entire consent calendar, then that can be noted for the recognition.
Thank you. So is it, so why, so I can, I can lead this also, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice, excuse me, President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
And Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Thank you. We're all.
Good.
And we'll note the abstention for item E.
5E, yeah. That gets us to our action calendar. That was the one I was worried about, if I lose, we lose him. 7A, this is authorizing submittal of Component 2 on the Lower Colorado. Robert Chang, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So, Item 7A is to request the board's consideration for staff to submit two applications on behalf of CVWD to reclamation's Component 2 of the Lower Colorado Conservation Program. This actually has a pretty short time fuse on it, and...
Oh, here we go. It's okay.
Is this supposed to be turned on, or? Oh, it is, okay. Sorry about that. So, for the board's consideration, there's two, there's two projects here, and I'll talk them, talk about them in a little bit more depth. The first one is the water reclamation plant four, or Warp 4, Recycled Water Expansion Project, and this has a proposed 30-year term. And the second is the golf course conservation program, which has a 10-year term. So, I don't need to belabor the discussions on the Colorado River too much, but I just want to give a timeline of, you know, all the activities that's transpired in the last year or so. So, of note are the two calls for RFPs, you know, from reclamation. So you'll see one, that was October 12 of 2022, and that was for Component 1A and 1B for the short-term conservation projects. And then, so CVWD has participated in this, and I'll give the status of that in a bit. The latest one, which came out on May 24th, is for the Component 2, which is the long-term conservation programs. So both of these programs draw on the $4 billion Inflation Reduction Act. Coupled within these are the more mandatory, you know, type actions that Reclamation is proposing, that CVWD is actively engaged in, and I'm not going to go into details here unless there's questions about it. So, to recap, this district's voluntary actions have always been grounded on the basis that these actions are voluntary, temporary, and compensated. So, so CVWD has participated under the 500-plus plan, which was started in 2021, a $200 million program, and it is funded by a consortium of water users as well as reclamation. So, the two programs that CVWD looked at were the Agricultural Conservation Program, and the board approved it, but ultimately it was not implemented. The one that was implemented ultimately towards the end of 2022 was the Replenishment Curtailment Program. And through curtailment of 90,083 acre feet from the Thomas E. Levy Facility, we received a little less than $2.4 million at a unit rate of $261.60 per acre foot. So, continuing on, so the 500-plus plan is, has sort of been gradually phased out, and we're transitioning now to the Lower Colorado Conservation Efficiency Program, which is under the IRF funding. So I'll give the status of the various programs that CVWD has been participating in. So the first, under the short-term actions, and has, and I'm happy to report that has been executed, at least on our end, is the Replenishment Facilities Curtailment Program. The board approved this back in its June, June meeting, and just to refresh your memories, we're curtailing up to 35,000 acre feet a year, up to three-year term, under a maximum pricing of $400 an acre foot. So that should, if we do the maximum terms of the agreement, may get us up to $42 million reimbursement, you know, for this agency. So the agreement has been signed by the general manager and our legal counsel, and is currently in Reclamation's hands, awaiting their execution. So hopefully, we'll get that in, in a week or so. The other short-term action is still under negotiations, is the Agricultural Fallowing Program. And that's for up to 10,000 acre feet a year, or up to 30,000 acre feet, you know, for the duration of three years. So we're awaiting and continue to negotiate with Reclamation on that. So the, the last piece is the agricultural, I'm sorry, the longer-term actions, which is being considered, you know, by the board today. So what I'll do is talk about the Warp 4 Recycled Water Expansion Program first. So this pro, this project proposes to expand the recycled water treatment facility by 1 million gallon day, which is about 1,120 acre feet a year. The total cost that we're asking for is $39 million, and that's not just for the, not just for the cost of treatment, but also for distribution, and then I think there are some contingencies built in. So the idea would be that the 1,120 acre feet of recycled water would be consumed by primarily agricultural water users at this point, and this, normally, this 1,120 would be delivered through Lake Mead, through the Coachella Canal, but now that would be retained or held back. So in terms of the specific summary numbers, the term would be for 30 years, annual volume of 1,120, of which generates a little less than 34,000 acre feet over the 30-year term. So if we take a look at that and do a straight analysis, present value, the unit cost comes out to be $1,161 acre foot. So the way that Reclamation is asking for assurances on this is that CVWD would be allowing the, the water water process to, to retain the water in Lake Mead. Next, so the golf course conservation program is a little bit more difficult, but has similar concepts. So the idea would be that through a combination of various water efficiency, long-term projects, for example, irrigation improvements or turf removal, there could be others, but these have been the primary ones that have been discussed pretty extensively in the Golf and Water Task Force, as well as other conversations with the golf community. Up to 300 acre feet a year of interest has been sort of expressed, although they're in different stages of discussion right now. This water would be retained back in Lake Mead. So I just want to walk through the numbers very quickly. So we're asking for $2.30 a square foot for, for this turf removed, for example, equivalent, and that's broken down to $2 a square foot for equivalent turf removal, and that's kind of based on the equivalent practice for our residential rebates. And 30 cents would help CVWD compensate, you know, for lost revenues, as well as for our administrative time. The term for this is 10 years. It's not longer, because we just felt that, because we're dealing with outside parties, longer terms are harder to administer. And I think the 10 years would give more certainty, you know, to the participants in terms of what's expected. So the annual volume, let's say, is 300 acre feet a year, and we've got some indication that, you know, that might be a reasonable number. The total volume would be 3,000 acre feet over the duration, which comes out to be a little over $2,800 an acre foot. So our funding request for this volume would be up to $9 million, which includes a 5% contingency for any kind of unforeseen circumstances. So though, that's a high-level view of what the, the program is, and, you know, there was a lot of work that went into this. Next, please. So our requested item here is because the submittal deadline is next week, I think it's on the 19th of July. This is a first step towards the long-term negotiations, you know, with Reclamation. And I think the proposal that was put together by our consultants is attached to your board package. Don't need to, you know, walk through it unless there's any specific questions. So really, the, the request is, you know, for the board to give staff approval based on these high ter, or high-level terms, you know, to be submitted, and obviously, you know, when we go into negotiations before any finalization of the agreement, we'll have to come back to the board for approval on that as well. So with that, let's see, next. So the potential future actions, you know, there's quite a bit. I'm not going to go through this until, unless, you know, there's some specific questions in the interest of time. So with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Robert, thanks. I know I've been looking at this for a while. I don't have my calculator with me. So how many acres of the golf is this going to do, or how many square feet?
Oh, let's see.
9 million divided by?
Yeah, so 9 million divided by?
By $2.
$2.30, right. So, yep, apologize. Give me just a quick moment.
3.9 million.
Square feet, or?
3.9 million square feet, which would be?
Damn.
Something like?
It's almost 1 to 1, it's 86,000 for 9 million.
Right.
86,000, so 86 acres? I mean, that?
Almost 90 acres, let's call it.
88,000, I just used 44,000.
Okay.
Yeah, almost 90, but I wouldn't, I would say that that calculation is, is fine, but...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if, you know, the golf courses start competing for, of course, it's very limited, right? Because it has to be golf courses using Colorado River.
It's, that's correct.
So there aren't that many?
There's not that many, and I think we've identified some.
If there's, if there's 40 of those golf courses, which I don't know if there are, that's two acres per golf course, is what they'd be able to go after?
If it's equivalent, but yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
Right, right.
Just try to get a ballpark of.
Of course.
John, I had a related question. So is this, is the golf course turf program, is that fairway, or is that just landscaped area, like common area, or is it both, or what does that actually cover?
Right, so thank you for that question. We're leaving it open to the golf courses. What we're looking at is, you know, essentially, how much water are you using per golf course, and we let them decide, you know, which areas that, you know, could be taken out without compromising, you know, their level of play and the, you know, customer experience.
Okay.
Usually, there's some non-playable areas on golf courses that?
Between holes?
That have grass on them, yeah. Yeah, between holes and just, or, you know, kind of adjacent to the tee boxes where if they took the grass out, nobody would play there anyways.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. President, I believe we do have members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment on?
All right, so yeah, then we'll take public comment.
Okay.
Who do we have?
First one up is Craig Kessler, so I'll go ahead and?
All right, good morning, Craig.
Move you over, Craig, and you should be unmuted.
Okay, if you can hear me, good morning, John, and members of the board. I'll be fairly brief. I filed a letter over the weekend with you, and I hope you had an opportunity to read it. Time was pretty compressed. I just want to point out for the edification of the board and those members who may not be as, as involved with the golf community, that the golf industry has had access to pretty generous rebate programs in that part of Southern California that's, that's attached to huge customer bases through the Metropolitan Water District, and even through Los Angeles Water and Power, San Diego Public Utilities. I was in Pasadena last night, Pasadena Water and Power, and even, even though those particular systems have 37, 22, and last night's four golf courses contained within them, they, they're ahead of the valley in terms of turf removal and various other kinds of programs that are really on the cutting edge. We're working with LA Water and Power, the Metropolitan Water District, on some more golf-specific programs that'll reduce water consumption even more over and above turf removal. Now, in those cases, it is because a lot of turf removal cards have been played, and those cards have not been played. A lot of those, some of those cards have been played in the Coachella Valley, but not all of them. So everything is flipped in the Coachella Valley. You have 120 golf courses total and no access to the rebate programs, and really, the only way, the only kind of access golf will ever have, or that you'll have as a district, is through these state and federal grants. And that's why I just, I filed the letter to really thank staff for working very closely with the golf community to develop this second part of this, of this Phase 2 application, and, and then, and indicate, and also thank the board. We hope, obviously encouraging you to approve this. To the questions of it only amounts to two or three acres, I think the golf community understands that this is not going to fund all of the turf removal or some of the other projects that the golf industry will participate in, but it will offset the costs thereof. I'll point out that I think we all understand that come 2026, we don't know the exact amount, but there will be, for the first time, some curtailments in the Colorado River allocation, again, to be worked out later. And for the golf community, that's, that's pretty visceral point, because for many, many years, and currently, the Coachella Valley Water Management Plan, the whole, the linchpin for the golf community is to get the golf courses off of pumping in favor of that raw water. Well, that raw water is not going to be, you know, virtually unlimited within a handful of years. So this is a move in a very positive direction, and again, and for that reason, and for the fact that this is really the only access, and for, I think, the reality that finally, that long last, after some years, after many years of trying, I think it's gotten through to the vast majority of the valley golf community, that the time has come to get more serious than it has in the past about water conservation, and get as serious as those golf courses in the coastal counties have been for the last 10 to 15 years. This is a great start, by no means the finish. Obviously, on behalf of the Southern California Golf Association, thank staff and heartily encourage you to approve this item today. Thanks for the opportunity to address you from another part of the state.
Thank you, Craig. Do we have anyone else?
Okay, do we have other speakers for this item? Please use the raise hand feature at this time. I do not see others at this time, Mr. President.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there any board discussion of this before we go to a vote? Could we have a motion to, we don't have a motion yet. Do we have a motion to approve 7A, please?
I had, I had a question on the water for Warp 4.
Go ahead.
So, Robert, the 1,100 acre feet that we're going to give up, that's for 30 years to stay into Lake Mead, and we're getting that water back after that 30 years, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. It, it's not a permanent reduction. I mean, even though 30 years does feel more or less permanent.
And, and that water, the ag community has no problem using that water?
That's my understanding.
I mean, we, you've, we've, we've reached out to the ag community to make sure that, the water is going to be fine with food safety and all these other things that agriculture has to deal with nowadays?
I would say that this is, has been an engineering project, so I haven't been involved in it as closely, but my understanding is, you know, there's, the outreach is, you know, continuing to go on right now. I mean, obviously, the contracts, you know, haven't been executed. This, this project will probably not come to fruition for another three or four years yet, but we're just trying to get the monies obligated, you know, for this, if the board, you know, sees fit on this project. So I think we'll have some time to kind of work those details out.
The, you know, the number of, of operators that would be adjacent and, and down slope of Warp 4 are fairly limited. There's four, five, maybe. So it would not be difficult to reach out to them to just get their feedback on this. I think it's, it should be feasible.
Right.
As far as you being able to use reclaimed water to irrigate these crops.
Well, all of those farmers are, I think, are, the majority are vegetable growers, and so I'm just kind of thinking out loud that, that may cause some problems.
Yeah, it's a fair comment. I know it's being done elsewhere around the state.
Right. So we'll definitely work through, you know, those details, but, you know, right now, the, you know, there's a short time fuse on this application, so I think those are fair points, and we'll, you know, continue, you know, to work on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I have an idea of someone I can talk to to be?
Sure.
Pretty easily to just get a sense of it.
I mean, John, you're, you're, you're okay with this?
Yeah, I think so. You know, I, I mean, I recall once, I thought we were going to have to use reclaimed water on our operation, and it caught me by surprise, but I looked into it then. I mean, that was a while ago, when it was less accepted, I think, and, and I, I believe it's quite feasible. I mean, even with leafy greens, typically, people are putting the water into their own reservoir and then treating it from there, so.
I'm just assuming that there's going to be a lot of different tests that farmers will have to go through. I'm just surprised that we haven't done the research first to, to find out, but...
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, and it's an accepted practice in other parts of the state. It hasn't been done here, just because we haven't had the?
The need.
Yeah, the need, it's all going to the golf courses.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, there are, there aren't any golf courses near Warp 4. That's why this is a little different. Or, or maybe Warp 7, you could potentially use some there, too.
Hmm.
All right. Is there, could we have a motion to approve 7A?
I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
And second. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Can we fix that? Thank you. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. And, you know, I'm also meeting with somebody tomorrow. I know it's, should have been before instead of after, but a golf course person with a lot of knowledge, so I'll report back if I learn anything there also.
I think we're still early in the process, or this is just to get our, I guess, our flag in the, in the ground.
Our position, yeah. 7B, award construction contract to Fane for monitoring wells.
Sabrina.
Good morning, Sabrina.
Good morning. So our request is to award a construction contract to Fane Drilling and Pump Incorporated for $338,830, in addition to approving a budget amendment request in the amount of $146,250, and additional expenditures for a total request of $446,250. So this is part of the salt and nutrient management plan, monitoring wells, Phase 2 project. We had $500,000 budgeted for fiscal years 2024 and 2025, but we will be constructing this project, we're proposing to construct this project this fiscal year alone. Any questions?
Actually, that was my question, because I was a bit confused by the staff report. So we're still, we're still doing this within the 500,000?
That's correct.
For total, but this is just moving money around from one year to another?
Yes, so there was 300,000 budgeted for fiscal year 2024, and 200,000 budgeted for fiscal year 2025, but this is really a three-month construction project, so we won't be using any funds in fiscal year 2025.
That's good, thank you.
You know, I just kind of, I, I read, these, so these wells are in our, these are our well, this is in our service area in our location. Are other participants in our SNMP doing their own? We're paying, we're paying for ours, are they paying for theirs? Does that make sense?
I believe so, I think Zoe might know more about that.
Zoe's going like, yes, okay. I always looked for shared costs on these projects, because it's kind of, it's a shared project, but these are ours.
Thank you, yes. Throughout the process, there's been shared costs, and with regards to the gap wells, each agency is responsible for the wells in their service area. Now, of course, our service area is bigger, so a little bit more falls on us, and I can also add that we received $160,000 from Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancy to offset approximately 50% of the cost of constructing these wells.
Yeah.
So everybody's taking a little bit of the responsibility. DWR is going to bill the remaining 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe.
Good, 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 sir. Anything?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I don't think Bianco's going to have an issue with it. Why don't we do the vote?
Should we ask, just because we have a lot of people on hand?
Oh, do we have any public comment?
Well, I don't know if we do, but we have about 10 people.
Yeah, go ahead, let's see.
So just to be sure we don't miss any public comment on this item, if you have any comment for Item 7B, please use the raise hand feature at this time. any comment for item 7B, please use the raise hand feature at this time. Okay, it does not appear that we do.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's do the roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Good, that passed 4-0. Thank you. Thanks, Sabrina. So we have a 7C, which is a lift station upgrade project. Good morning, Armando.
Good morning. Good morning, President Powell. Members of board, audience, and fellow staff. My name for the record is Armando Rodriguez, Engineering Manager with CDD. And the purpose of this request is to seek authorization to solicit bids for the construction of the lift station 511. This is the mega lift station at, within Hammond Road. The, it's located within the intersection of Hammond Road and Avenue 66. This project will be, is needed to provide infrastructure for, one, recilency and redundancy, you know, provide emergency storage, and also much-needed improved motor control centers and generator, but then also to address capacity. There is existing limitations, but then also there's existing proposed development that will help with this development. The project is fully funded within the County River Site has, will be contributing through the American Rescue Plan Act, or the ARPA, with about $3.1 million, and the rest will be coming from the Sanitation Capacity Charge Fund. Is there any particular questions, or would you like me to continue with the presentation?
I don't.
I, I'll make a motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Thanks, Armando. We have a motion and a second. Yeah, I don't have any.
I don't know why.
Weird when I touch it, it stops.
I think it's too many on at once.
Roll, roll, roll call vote, please.
Good morning, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 4-0. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
D, approve the water supply assessment for thermal ranch specific plan.
Just tell, yeah, there we go.
Zoe, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This item today consists of requesting approval from the board for the water supply assessment for the thermal ranch specific plan. This project is in approximately 619 acres, located between Avenue 62nd and 64, and Harrison and Tyler. The project proposes to build an, a master plan community focused around an equestrian lifestyle community with six planning areas. It would include 1,682 dwelling units, 285,000 square feet of commercial space, 150 key hotel, and just over 17,000, pardon me, 17 million square feet of open and landscaped area, as well as some home pools, public pools, and some irrigation ponds. We included a, just an inset of Planning Area 1. This is very conceptual, but the project proponent wanted to illustrate that for Project Area 1, only certain areas would have turf. The rest would probably raw land that would require some type of ongoing dust control during the equestrian season. And so in terms of the demand for this project, the total would be 1,753 acre feet per year, including approximately 280 of indoor residential, 231 of indoor commercial, and 1,168 of outdoor irrigation, and then the pools and irrigation ponds, approximately 74 acre feet. This is about 2.83 acre feet per acre, and about 3.6% of the demand, the growth in demand and development that we have planned in our water management plans. This project is within the area where we planned for, for growth, so this is included in those projections in the Indio Sub Basin Water Management Plan. So with that, I am seeking approval of the water supply assessment to support their SEQA process on this specific plan, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
John, I have a question. Zoe, I'm looking at the, one of the attachments, it was the list of the projects that have been previously reviewed and approved in the water assessment effort. And so what, I'm, there's a column there talks about the expiration date where it says in many cases not specified, or in the final column it says expired. These are multiple projects that are listed. Are those considered in the quantity of your assessment? Or do, I mean, why are these, why do they stay on here if they've expired or are not specified? How does that work?
So this was a request from the board, I think about five years ago, to include this list. So certainly, we are open to any modifications that help. We can also begin to remove those that are expired if that's the wish of the board. You know, I want to thank staff for reaching out during the last water supply assessment. In this one, they reached out to every single project proponent to get an update on the status. So if you'll notice, the statuses have been approved, pardon me, have been updated since the last time. Now, the reason that some do not have an expiration is, there's a lot of interpretation on whether water supply assessments themselves expired and what triggers reviews. So at the beginning of this process, as the district started doing this process, they didn't include expiration dates. And then you'll notice we added something called specific plan approved, additional projects might require updates. A lot of times, we approve these big specific plans, they do their SEQA based on this water supply assessment, and then as projects come in, we've seen that things can change. So we're being a lot more clear on the fact that we're preparing this documentation to support their SEQA for the entire specific plan, but as projects come in, if their water demands change, we are able to require additional calculations to ensure that there haven't been any changes to the projected demand. So hopefully, that answers your question.
So you'd require, you'd require an update at some point if, if necessary, so.
Correct.
Every five years, you do an update.
I'm good.
If they hadn't been constructed.
Thank you.
Any?
Yeah, I mean, so, and whenever this comes up, we make a point of saying this isn't a promise to provide water. This is just meeting a state requirement that there is sufficient water in the 20-year horizon, time horizon, to supply this project's needs.
That is correct, President Powell, and I will point out, just because the template changed this time, that we worked with BB&amp;K to add language that more clearly captures that, and it is in the last paragraph of the summary, specifying the limitations of this water supply assessment, additional calculations that may be required in the future, as well as the fact that this is not a commitment to provide any quantity, quality of water. That is done through agreements with CBWD and subject to all the requirements that might be in place at the time.
Good. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve this item. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 4-0.
Thanks, Zoe.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Finance. Rick, this is our adopt the state water project levy of .111 per $100 assessed value. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning. As stated, this item is specifically requesting the adoption of two resolutions so that we can put on the tax rolls for the next fiscal year, the same state water project tax rate, which is 11 cents per $100 in value for both the counties that we assess taxes in Riverside and Imperial County. This item is the sort of final culmination action from our discussions during the whole budget season this, this spring, and even our discussions on the reserve targets here in June. Ultimately, this tax is necessary to raise what we estimate is about $90 million in revenue to pay what is $94 million in state water project expenses, and we plug the gap with about $1 million in investment income and the remaining $3 million from reserve funding for the next year. In this report, you'll see something a little bit different than previous years, which are two consultant reports, one from a rate consultant and another from an economist, dealing specifically with the new requirements that are called out from, from recent litigation and, and court judgment. And that specifically is dealing with the, the requirement to deal with the need to address whether it is feasible to take these expenses and assess them on rates rather than the tax. And so that's what the consultants are addressing in their reports, and it's detailed, pretty extensive detail in both in the reports and in the summary, so I won't go into too much detail there. Other than to summarize that the conclusion from the consultants and staff's recommendation is that it is infeasible to put these on rates. Specifically, the way that we operate with our special government code dealing with our racks or replenishment charges is we would have to put these on the racks, these expenses, if they're not on the tax, and this would be a significant increase to the rack rates, going from something in $130 to $160 per acre foot range to about the $900 per acre foot range, which of course would have very large increases to our domestic rates, something to the tune of over a 50% rate increase, which would most impact disadvantaged communities who wouldn't see the benefit of the, necessarily of the tax reduction. It would also very heavily impact any large pumper that pays the rack. Usually, in our service areas, these are things like the golf courses that pump heavily. And there were estimates from the economists that this might be something to the tune of about an 86% increase to an average golf course that, that pumps on their O&M budget. And then lastly, there's some consideration in here, because we, we do operate the racks under the government code procedure that we have, that the security of the revenues would be a major issue going forward if we had to put everything on the rack rates. Specifically, unlike our normal domestic rates where there's the procedure to potentially shut off, or the property taxes, which go through the county's process, and it's a very secured way to get the revenues, rack rates specifically, we have no ability to necessarily shut off, and even more so, we have to individually go after each delinquency in, in court, which is very inefficient and very costly to have to come up with revenues to pay what are some of our most strict payment requirements on the state water project. So there's, there's overall fiscal integrity concerns with that as well. That being said, available for any questions, but the recommendation is to adopt the, the resolutions, and I know there may be some public comment as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Yeah, thank you for your comments. I was going to say some similar things, but no need to repeat what you just said, so thank you.
I was just going to add, Mr. President, no, we did receive a letter of protest that was distributed to the board. It's a 29-page letter that's distributed to the board, and it will be added as part of the record to this item as well. And I do believe we have at least one or two members of the public online on Zoom that would like to provide comments, so when we're ready for those.
Okay. Do we have any other board comments or questions before we go to public?
Yeah, Rick, I, just so that I can remember, do we have to approve this levy each year?
Yes, and we have to approve it timing-wise before August 10th, so we can get it to the counties in time to put it on the tax rolls.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
How long has this tax been around for?
Seventies?
I would have to go back and check to get you an exact date, Director Bianco, but it has been in place, I would say, for at least 40 years, if not 50.
So, so there hasn't been anybody on this board who initiated this tax? This tax has been here for, you know, 50 years, or somewhere between 40 and 50?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the amount of the tax has been modified more recently, but the existence of the tax, I'd say at least 50 years. Yeah, I don't know the exact date.
Yeah, but, but the assumption that, that farmers have brought this tax on is, is unfounded since some of us weren't even alive when this was enacted.
Right.
I guess what I'll say, Rick and Jim, is, is as we, as we started entering into more contracts like sites reservoir, I'd really like to get a clear sense of what that does to this, to this tax moving forward as we, as we continue to work those things out, so that we can, you know, we can have those conversations prior to just, and I'm sure we will, but just as a reminder.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, public comment?
Members of the public wishing to speak on item 7E, please use the raise hand feature. Okay. First speaker we have is Mr. John Haytall, I believe, Haytall. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Please unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was perfect. Mr. President, members of the board, good morning. And I guess for Director Bianco, I guess it's either good afternoon or bono sara. My name is John Haytall with the Law from Stallone Addison Law Corporation. We represent Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association and representative matters regarding, among other issues, the state water project or SWP at Valorem Property Tax presently being considered. Yesterday, our office submitted a protest letter of the proposed fiscal year 2024 SWP tax. As stated in our letter, the Riverside Superior Court recently held that CBWD's state water project tax levy for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2022 were invalid and unconstitutional, and the proposed tax levy for fiscal year 2024 is invalid and unconstitutional for the same reasons, among others. Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association has protested and continues to protest CBWD's invalid and unconstitutional levy and diversion of SWP property taxes as set forth in the protest letter. Otherwise, thank you, and a thank you to Mr. Muthis for her help in making this statement possible.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
And I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public online that would like to comment on item 7E? Okay, we don't have any.
Hearing none?
And if the board, when the board does wish to consider these resolutions, we would recommend separate motions and votes on these two separate resolutions because they're for two separate counties and two separate actions, just, just to be careful.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Riverside County first.
2023-23.
Correct.
Mr. President, I will move adoption of Resolution 2023-23.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. So this is the Riverside County one?
Correct.
That 23 kind of throws me off. It has nothing to do with the year. Yeah.
That's just, it's the 23rd resolution this year. Correct.
So we have a motion, a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and now I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-24 for Imperial County.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-24.
All second.
Got it. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
On to F. This is our, some vehicles, including some battery electric vehicles. We didn't get pictures this time, and if we did, I didn't see them. No pictures?
I apologize, I didn't put any pictures of them on there. They're cute little things, though.
Do you want to go and draw one?
Yes, you can Google it all, so. Good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada, distinguished members of the board. We're here this morning asking you to authorize the purchasing division to execute purchase orders utilizing the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative for the purchase of the 25 battery electric vehicles through the National Auto Fleet Group. There's one battery electric cart from Ardio Agricultural Equipment Company, one triaxle trailer that would be from Trail King Industries, and one Vactor Truck Refurbishment utilizing the Haker Equipment Company. And we also would like to approve additional contingency expenditures in the amount of $49,311 for total delivered price of $1,200,000. And the disposal of up to 28 vehicles as set forth in the fleet compliance plan by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. The funding for the aforementioned vehicles is included in the adopted fiscal year 2024 multiple capital improvement budget, and as such, there'll be no adverse impact to the budget. As background, we have been negotiating with the South Coast Air Quality Management District Regulatory Enforcement Staff and working collaboratively with them for mitigation as well as future compliance for CBWD. The 25 battery electric vehicles will be strategically placed into the meter reader division and a couple of them into water management as it fits the utilization plan for those type of vehicles. And I just might point out as a final note that the 25 vehicles that we'll send to auction, that those will replace are the highest mile and highest cost half-ton pickups that we have in the fleet, so that's an additional benefit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't really, I, so these meter reader vehicles, I guess you don't need a lot of range, huh? What sort of, how many miles a day does somebody drive?
Well, those vary, but those fit the mileage band of what one of these battery electric vehicle ranges. These bolts have a projected range of about 250 miles. And the good news is the battery charging infrastructure that we're looking at would integrate with our Geotab system, so we'll be able to monitor the status of those vehicles throughout the day also and anticipate if there's any potential issues with range projections. But they fit that mileage band. That's why we looked at the meter readers. They're a smaller vehicle, which they like the thought of anyway, as opposed to the full-size half-ton pickups, and it fits that mileage band that they would have.
Yeah.
And we have the infrastructure?
We have it in our budget for the infrastructure, and I just got my final quote for the hardware. So that would be timed almost perfectly, actually, as the bolts are projected to be put into production next week sometime at the factory, and it'd be probably 90 days after that. So the hardware is between two and six weeks away, and then installation would be on top of that at the Palm Desert facility, but it would all time out pretty well to the arrival of those vehicles.
I saw something going around this facility. It looked like an electric vehicle, a little mini truck or something.
It's called a tropos. Yeah, it's a, the facilities and maintenance has one, and then the warehouse has one, and the, the facilities and maintenance has a little dump body on it as well, but it's all battery electric. We got those about three years ago.
Tropos?
Tropos.
Tropos?
Yep.
Are they working out okay?
They were, so far, they've been fantastic.
They're on, just onsite, though? They don't go?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve 7F?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Motion and second.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 40.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Public hearing. So on to 8A. Is our public hearing on domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments for Riverside and Imperial Counties. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments to be assessed for fiscal year 2023-24 through collection on the tax rolls. Making the presentation is Albert Galindo, accountant. Good morning, Albert.
Good morning. Within District numbers 6, 7, 8, 18, 19, and Service Year 35, the amount of the levy is $10 per year for each acre of land, or $10 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre. Within Districts numbers 10, 13, 14, and 15, the amount of the levy is $30 per year for each acre of land, or $30 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre of domestic water service availability. Within Improvement District number 11, the amount of the levy is $23 per year for each acre of land, or $23 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre for domestic water service availability. With all, within all sanitation improvement districts, the amount of the levy is $30 per year for each acre of land, or $30 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre for sewage and waste service availability.
Thank you. This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on the proposed domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments in Riverside and Imperial Counties for fiscal year 2023-24. Clerk Bermudas, have we completed proper notification of this hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. It says I present proofs, but I really don't. I have the proofs, publication from the Desert Sun and Ivy Press and the affidavit of posting.
Counsel, comment?
Yes, Mr. President, this public hearing is being held pursuant to a notice duly published in a newspaper as required by law within the counties that are subject to the annual domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments for fiscal year 2023 to 24. These amounts are unchanged from previous years. The report containing the actual description of each parcel of land within the district upon which the assessments will be imposed has been filed with the clerk of the board.
Thank you. At this time, I declare the public hearing open, and will request that those wishing to speak, please give your name, property, location, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Do we see anybody?
Sorry. We'll just check on Zoom. If we have any members of the public on Zoom that would like to provide public comment for this public hearing, please use the raise hand feature at this time.
I do not see any at this time, Mr. President.
All right. There being no further comments, I declare the public hearing closed. Clerk Bermudas, have we received any written communications regarding the availability assessment?
No, Mr. President, we have not received any written communications.
Okay. Counsel Frey, will you comment on the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President, this public hearing has been held as required by law. The board has given the property owners the right to be heard. All legal requirements have been satisfied, and the board can now proceed in making its decision on the establishment of the domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments to be collected on the tax rolls.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the board then. Why don't we get a motion and a second, and then we'll have board discussion?
I will move approval, Mr. President, of resolution 2322.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, you know, I've, over the years, I've kind of bumped into these assessment districts and then asked questions, and then I kind of get off of them, and then they come back. But I really like the map that you've put up there, and it's triggered some of those same thoughts that I've had before. And what I want to know is specifically for like the area of North Shore, which is in the orange. I know that on that top right there, I know that there's a lot of folks that aren't connected to the sewer pipeline. I know that it's been a comment that's been made several times. I know at one point, Armando, you were working with leadership council to try to come up with some cost calculations of what it would take to consolidate some of those parcels. And so my question is, as it relates to that area in orange, are the assessments being done on parcels that have a connection to the pipeline, or is this a blanket levy on all the parcels that are captured within that polygon?
Any customers that are connected to our, to the pipelines or any type of lines, they are not, they are not getting charged this assessment. It's only the customers who, majority of this assessment is based off of undeveloped properties or properties that do get these charges, they're not getting charged. So they're getting, if they are connected, they're getting our service charge on a monthly basis.
So this is, okay, so this is, that's why you're calling it the availability charge?
Yes, sir.
And so have we ever thought about, if we're taking on this revenue, about connecting folks? Adding a lateral to their property, or how do we, how do we handle? Maybe, maybe that's a conversation we need to have on the board, but I just, you know, I just, it doesn't, to me, I feel a little bit weird about it when perhaps we've been assessing this parcel, and some of these are single-family homes that are, probably have people living in them, because there are, there are folks that have septic systems. And so we charge this assessment for, I don't know, call it 30 years or 20 years, and, you know, we don't, we don't, there should be a way for us to reinvest that to, into the community, I think, so. In general, that's, that's where my, my comment comes from. And so what's, what's the assessment? Is it like 70 bucks a year or something?
It's for sewer availability, we charge $30.
Okay, so it doesn't really amount to much anyway, so. But thank you, thank you for answering. I just wanted to get a sense of what we're being charged.
So the idea is that if they applied to connect to the sewer system, they would be able to do that, but there would be a cost associated with that?
Yes, sir. The $30 would go, the $30 would be, it'd be considered satisfied, and so they'd be getting, if they're connected to our sewer system, we would be charging them the assessment charge for the sewer.
Right, but there would also be a cost to actually connect, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Do we have an idea of what that is?
I don't. I want to see if it's 40, around 4,500, around 4,500.
It's, it's a lot more than $30.
Yes, sir.
A year.
There would also be the, the private cost of the, you know, there's the capacity charges that they would pay to us, and there would also be the private plumbing costs that they would incur, and that tends to be the barrier. You know, those upfront costs to connect.
So it's in the thousands?
Yeah, it's probably approaching $10,000, so.
Okay, I wanted to get a sense of the assessment. It doesn't seem like it's much, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's really just keeping them in a position where they have the ability to connect if they decide to in the future, but, but there's a big cost to do that.
Yes, sir.
To make, actually make the connection.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any other comments before we go to a vote? Okay, I'm missing something. Then a roll call vote, please.
Yes, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed 40.
Thanks, Albert.
Thanks, Albert. Okay. Where are we? Yeah, written communications. I know we had the...
We had, I believe it was just the one, the customer that had some old historical...
Right, was dropping off some information.
She was gonna, she would be dropping it off at Palm Desert location.
And then we have a mid-year legislative report on state and federal. Victoria, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. We'll start over. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So today, we have both our state and federal government affairs teams on the line to provide you with an overview of current standings, both in Washington, D.C., as well as in Sacramento, and then some of the key events that have happened in the last few weeks that are outside of the written report that were presented as part of the staff report. So with that, I'll pass it over to our federal advocates. I believe Anna Schwab will be taking lead for the team.
Thanks, Victoria, and good morning, directors. Apologies for my voice in advance. I think I left it in my other backpack, but I will search to find it later. So we wanted to give you a quick update today based on where things currently are. And so we see right now that the Congress is in the appropriations cycle. They have just a few weeks left in session to make this term. The goal that they have, the deadline for appropriations is by September 30th. They are, have a few weeks left here in July, and they will be out of session in August. So when you couple it, it's really only a few weeks left. They're slowly but surely making their way through the appropriations process. There are 12 bills they do ultimately have to do. Of consideration in this, though, if you'll recall, in your report, we talk about the debt deal that was agreed to by President Biden and Speaker McCarthy. When they did that debt deal, they did agree to what the funding levels would be for FY24 and FY25. In doing so, they, they basically determined for the, for the Congress, how much the Congress could spend. House Chairwoman Granger, however, though, determined that she was going to set the limits a little different, and she was having all of her House bills be set at the FY22 levels. The chairwoman and ranking member in the Senate have already said that that's a non-starter for them, that they will be going with the levels that were agreed to in the debt deal. So given that none of the bills have passed the chambers yet, given that there is this divide between the House and the Senate, we know that appropriations staffs are preparing for a continuing resolution till at least December. What this means is, and if you'll recall from previous years, essentially, they will extend current appropriations for a few weeks or a few months to allow them the time to finish the appropriations process for FY24. If they cannot pass a continuing resolution, they will end up in a brief shutdown, but fingers crossed, they can at least get through a continuing resolution and lead to determination on some of the next FY24 bills. Important to note here, and why this matters for the district, is two of the bills, Energy and Water and Interior and Environment, are two of the main bills that we usually follow for the district, as well as the agricultural bill. These three bills contain the funding programs that are most pertinent for the district and the priorities that the district seeks to follow through on. Also of note, if you recall from previous years, in the Interior and Environment Bill, there is the EPA Congressional Directed Spending or Community Project Spending Program. While none of the House members put us forward this year, we were put forward by Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla, and we are awaiting the House, or excuse me, the Senate Interior and Environment Committee to set their committee deadline and then also follow, release the Congressional Directed Spending Request that will follow their bill. So we will continue to keep you all apprised of that and work to see how that progresses. We'll also continue to work to ensure that the funding programs that are important to CBWD maintain their levels, if not get increases. Overall, I cash all of this in. We're in a very interesting time, although it's a midterm, and we are, you know, technically no major election right now. We're still in a very interesting day, division between the House and the presidency, as well as the House and the Senate, and needing to ensure that they both can get appropriations through, as well as policies through as well. So we're continuing to monitor those on the issues that are in the district's legislative policies that the board had approved earlier this Congress. I'll pause there and see, Sam or Lowry, anything to add? Okay. Okay, well, with that, just wanted to see if there were any questions from the directors then.
No, there doesn't seem to be any questions from directors.
Wonderful, thank you all, and hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And with that, we'll go over to Cyrus Stevers, our State Affairs Advocate, and highlight some of the bills that we've been working on and some of the, I'm pausing for time, I'm, okay, there we go. We had a small glitch, okay, perfect. So Cyrus, I'm going to hand it over to you, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, directors. The, this may be the mid-year of the calendar, but we are two-thirds of the way through the legislative cycle. There are three crunch periods in the legislature. And yesterday and today is the second of those crunches. So first is your first House policy deadline. And this week is the second House Policy Committee deadline. So this Friday is the deadline to move any bill out of any policy committee. So if a bill was referred to more than one committee, it has to clear both or whatever by Friday, or it's a dead bill for this year. Bills that do survive, though, then get a break because the end of the week starts the legislative recess for the summer. So the bills that survive now, they get a little pause and the legislature comes back. But then we hit the third crunch, which is the worst crunch of the year, which is the end of session. So in one 30-day sprint, all remaining work gets done in the Capitol. That's, bills have to go to fiscal committees and then clear the floor and then get back to their house of origin and get passed. So with that, we now have, I can now report some final results on some really important bills. First, let me start with the, you know, we've talked a lot about the water rights package this year. The second, the main bill, which was AB 460, it died. I think I need, basically, if you read my written report, you can throw it away because it's all completely out of date by now. Things happen so fast at this time of year that having to meet the advanced notice deadlines, you know, pretty much make my written report moot. So, and AB 460, I think I speculated about its future, or I said there's a source that indicates it's dead. Well, that's official now, it's failed to meet any deadline that it had to meet. So AB 460, the main bill of the water rights package is dead. The second bill of that, AB 1337, as of last night at about 4:30, is also dead. So that bill was pulled at literally the last moment from committee. I'm reporting just like rumor and talk in the halls, not from reliable sources. But it appears that, again, that bill just did not have the votes to clear committee. In each case, though, both of the authors, the Chair of the Water Protection and Wildlife Committee, Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, and the Assembly Member, Buffy Wicks, the author of 1337, they, they're both slated for bigger things. They are a part of the incoming leadership group. And so I, my sense is neither of them wanted to really plant a flag and get these water bills through. I almost wish I could talk to new members coming in and saying, don't, don't get involved in water bills unless you're really going to make a career out of this because it's, it requires commitment. So both of those bills now have, are stopped. The final bill of the package is SB 399, it's up today. That is the, that is, that is the least offensive or worrisome bill of the package. This is the one that, SB 39, Alan, is the one that would allow the State Water Resources Control Board to have more information gathering, gathering authority to substantiate the water rights, specifically pre-1914 water rights. Of course, the water rights down in this part of the world are, you know, drawn to the gallon. So it's really not a factor that the board can, you know, demand or information. I suspect CBWD could give its water rights descriptions in gallons, CFS, acre feet, however they want. But, so anyway, that, if this lines up, if this works, this is going to go down really as a banner year for the water community. This is probably the most substantial year in legislation, probably in the last 10. And it's looking like the water community is going to pretty much run the board on legislation. We had quite a rough year last year. We had the, you know, the conservation bill, bills, conservation package bills, you know, that were opposed, they kind of, they slipped through. So this, this year is looking like, like kind of redeemed ourselves a little. So it's water rights. The other bill I wanted to talk about was AB 77, AB 755. This is one that I called attention to a while back because the water rights bill sucked all the air out of the room. And this bill was a problematic bill, and it did not get the attention that I felt it really deserved. And then this and a group of other bills kind of slipped through under the radar, you know, in the policy committees in the first House. 755 is the one that I was concerned would lead to risk of litigation because water agencies would have to publish an estimate of cost savings if greater efficiency was achieved and put that in your rate, in your cost of service analysis. And I just felt like that was ripe for second guessing and litigation. Well, I'm pleased to say that it was really a group of like me and about three other lobbyists really took this on. And Aqua and CMU weighed in, but there wasn't an organized effort through Aqua or CMU. But about a handful of us that just kind of by chance represent almost the entire state, took this on and the author agreed to amendments that pretty much remove every, every point of concern that, you know, the group of opposing it had. Now, it's still going to require some information and cost of service analysis, but it's information that is basically already being generated. And we don't have to put hypotheticals or guesswork in the cost of service analysis. That eliminated the risks of litigation. So it worked out really well, the main, main lobbyists working on the bill were able to go neutral on the bill. And that was just really gratifying to author kind of, I think, kind of saw that the lobbyists involved covered every Democrat on the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee except one. So I think we, maybe we had an outsized impression just because of our geographic representation. So that has also turned out well. So this goes into what I was saying earlier. We're looking at a, that clean sweep on legislation if this all holds. Still more to go, but it looks good right now. Finally, just kind of like some House committee matters, the Governor's Infrastructure Bill Package. In my written report, I list the bills and I say, hey, this is where you can go see them if you want. Again, things happen so fast at this time of year that all of those bills have now been passed, sent to the governor, and signed. So those, all those are now law. So the governor got, I'd say, 80% of a loaf, he got most of what he wanted. His secret reform bill is not going to be as impressive as he hoped. Sadly, he had to drop the Delta Conveyance Streamlining from it in order to get the bill, you know, package through. Doesn't hurt, it just means we're status quo. So, but that's now, that's now ancient history. That's how fast things move now. And if that's not enough change, we have a new speaker as of July 1st, or June 30th, however you want to put it. So Robert Reeves out of the Salinas area is our new speaker, replacing Anthony Rinden. The major changes are yet to come. He's announced his immediate leadership team, just the Assembly Pro Tem, Georgia leader. But we are expecting, we, the Sacramento community, we're expecting large-scale committee chair changes. I actually thought maybe they're going to happen during this month-long summer recess. But kind of word on the street now is, no, just leave it in place and changes will happen in the fall. So the new session will start with some new committee chairs. That, that means the announcements can come out at any time, anytime during the fall. We might be into December before we know who committee chairs are. So with that, those five items, wanted to update my written report. That's where we are. Let me pause, and if there are any questions, I'll have it answered.
Did they, did they talk about the conservancy?
Did you want to?
Yeah, a quick question on, was my understanding that IID had a, an item? A week ago, maybe? And did they, did they oppose the bill now?
Talking about the conservancy.
Yes.
Yes, no, no worries. So SB 583, yes, IID did have an item on their board. They went to a two-year bill position from their supportive amended position. And Cyrus can speak a little bit more to the nuances of that position. But without it being a direct oppose, it's, it's not a favorable position for the bill.
Okay, good. Well, that, that's all I wanted to know. And then, and then the language, the new language came out. I saw that you sent us a copy of that. And so now after this, this recess, does, where does, where does the bill go next?
Sure. Cyrus, did you want to speak to the deadlines? And I know we were also talking about California Natural Resources Agency weighing in.
Sure. So going back to those deadlines I mentioned earlier, SB 583 has now met those deadlines. So it passed its policy committee hearing, it now has a fiscal committee deadline. But no, as before, I don't see any serious possibility that it won't meet that deadline. And yes, the language of the bill, that's in the bill right now, reflects the direction of the amendments taken in the committee. So the committee analysis recommended, they weren't scripted in the analysis. And for that reason, CBWD went support if amended, waiting to see the language. That language is now in, appears to effectuate exactly what the analysis says. IID has taken this position, and at least one of those things I don't think can be reconciled with what was in the committee analysis. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to play out. But, you know, if you, if you take them out, amendments in committee, and you commit to them, and then you take them. If you later change that, pretty much get pulled back to committee. So we'll see how this plays out. But yeah, the bill is moving forward, and it's pretty much got the end of session to complete cycle.
And then I'll just mention that we have been continuing to work with Riverside County, Seavag. And there is a sense that folks want to get to a support position soon. And so that is what we're trying to communicate to the Senator. And so in your, in your meetings, if you're able to communicate the same, I think that would be helpful. I know that the Salt and Sea Authority has one specific change that they're trying to add. I've, I think what we've said is, you know, you could try to negotiate that. But it seems like the rest of the group is going to start to lean in, in the support direction. So, so, so I think we're all on the same page.
Okay, that's great. Any additional questions for Cyrus? President Powell? No? Okay, great. Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you all, it's always a pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Victoria. This brings us to Board General Comments. How about we start with Director Bianco?
No, no comments.
Director Aguilar.
No comments.
I'll skip mine as well. Can you at least tell us how it is in Italy?
What's the temperature? So I left Monday morning at 7:00 AM. I arrived here 30 minutes before the board meeting, 23 and a half hours. I was on three flights, and all three flights were delayed. And the weather here is about 85 degrees and 50% humidity, it's nice. So I really haven't had a chance to do anything except this since I've been here.
You could have stayed here and done this.
Yeah, I know.
So dedicated, so dedicated.
Enjoy your, your vacation when it does start. I tell you, air travel is really something else.
It's gotten terrible.
It digs a lot out of you, that's for sure.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so any board requests for future agenda items?
Mr. President, I would like to request, I had a brief conversation with, with Jim and Rick about this. But a possible future item to discuss the committee structure of the board. We've had a very tough time getting both committees together for, for legitimate reasons. And I'd just like to have a more specific discussion around the committee charges and when those meetings take place.
So you're referring to legislative and finance committees? Okay, so we can have an open meeting discussion.
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, we can add it to a future date.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Onto meeting reports. Let's see, June 8th, we had Salt and Sea Authority. What was it, a meeting between Salt and Sea Authority and the county discussed the conservancy bill, Director Estrada.
Yeah, I think I, I mentioned some of that last, last meeting that we've been having several conversations about the conservancy bill. And this was another meeting between some of the parties and the Salt and Sea Authority.
Yeah, yeah, okay. June 27th, Eastern Coachella Valley Task Force.
Yeah, that's our quarterly meeting that we have with EPA and a lot of other local agencies, including State Water Resource Control Board, the county congressman's office, supervisor's office, assembly member's office. And so we've been, we've been asked to participate. And we, we go in there and give an update on all our projects, that's what we did. We had a good, I think, presentation. And then I was able to grab some dinner with Ms. Guzman and Chairman Escuvel. And so they, they do have some thoughts about making additional monies available. They wanted to connect, and so we might connect staff to their staff.
Good.
Always happy to take more money.
June 27th, Coachella Valley Agricultural Lands Coalition, I was on that. And I'll tell you what, it's just getting more expensive and more complex regulation. We're, we got our permit to do fish tissue monitoring, so we're going to start fishing in the channel. Just the most absurd thing, I feel like I'm on a Dr. Seuss book or something. But that's what we're going to do. Yeah, red fish, blue fish. So, and it doesn't come cheap. June 28th, Gulf and Water Task Force, we had that meeting. Lot of the usual things. We did kind of get a sense of their willingness to participate in this bucket tube, $2 square foot program. And then we had, I got quizzed by our auditor on whether I'm aware of any, any problems. And I gave a clean report.
Yes.
With no prodding from staff at all. No gun to my head or anything, just being honest. Any, any other meetings we need to add? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, John. I, on Friday, I think it was Friday, I had a meeting at the, at the office with Jim and with Rick and with Dean and Paul outside of council to discuss my new role on the Coachella Valley Energy Commission. And we have a first, at least my first meeting coming up in this month. So it was very useful, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
That's a big one. Good. Any others? Could I have a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
I was looking at Director Estrada, I thought you had.
I didn't think you had.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
And Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 4-0. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir, good morning. I'm happy to announce that we now have a new Director of Environmental Services who has joined us today and sitting in the back of the room. Joanne Lee comes to us from Monterey. I'll give you some time to think whether or not you want to come forward under departmental reports. But if not, that's quite all right. Thank you for, for coming down to be part of us.
You know, we had to hire a consultant to do our fishing for us, so I wonder if you have any particular, if you have any particular fishing skills that you might be able to lend.
I don't have any skill in that front, so. I can't help you there, sorry. But my name is Joanne Lee, I'm the Director of Environmental Services. Thanks, Jim, for a warm welcome. Excited to be here, even though it's a warmer time of the year. But very excited to lead the Environmental Services Department in working collaboratively with our internal, as well as our external stakeholders to ensure water quality, water resources, and of course, protecting natural resources in our service area. So thank you all for a warm welcome.
Welcome, glad to see you here.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thanks, Joanne.
Yes.
And that's all I've got, sir. I think that's sufficient. That ought to cover me for a couple of meetings.
That's a good one. So Council Comments?
Yes. I just wanted to mention, Mr. President, the state auditor issued an audit on May 25th this year regarding an audit of DWR, Department of Water Resources. And basically, this state audit concluded that DWR has continued to rely heavily on climate data that is out of date when developing its forecasts. In fact, in water year 2021, DWR overestimated the state's water supply and air the DWR pointed to as the, due to the severe conditions of climate change. DWR, this is also the auditor's conclusion, has not developed a comprehensive long-term plan for the state water project that meets the best practices for proactively mitigating or responding to drought. Well, one of the recommendations was for DWR to, by November of this year, to publish on its website a timeline that affirms when it will implement its updated models and procedures across all the watersheds for which it produces water and which it does forecasting. DWR had a response, no surprise. And their response was that though managing water supplies for 27 million people throughout the extraordinary hydrology of the last 10 years is easier in hindsight than in the moment, DWR does appreciate the complexity of the examination summarized by the state auditor and that they appreciate and will implement the audit recommendations that established a formal, to establish a formal process to evaluate the forecasting models. DWR has been discussing that idea with collaborators and with the intention of incorporating changes to that effect. DWR also agrees that a public facing webpage with annual updates, which would be helpful for both the department and the stakeholders. And then finally, DWR's response said, no amount of paperwork will solve the challenges of climate change. However, a collaborative team of scientists, academic partners, and water managers who are dedicated to improve forecasting and water management through extreme flood and drought will help keep California safe and secure water supply. So as you may know, the state auditor does audits from time to time. The purpose of those in general are to propose or to recommend potential laws that can be introduced. Nothing came from that in that regard, but there was an audit, detailed review of their forecasting methods. And at least through the audit response, they will be updating those. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Do we have any department reports today?
Yes, sir, if I may. Rick and I were speaking the other day, and I've encouraged Rick, since he arrived, to take a look at everything we do, and if there are changes he would like to propose, then by all means, come forward. I might also say that, you know, Rick is no longer our newest department head. So I don't know whether that adds to the credibility of what he's about to describe, but I will leave it to him.
Thank you, Jim. Just one brief update on an intended change of practice from what we've done at least the last few years regarding our CalPERS unfunded liability payment. So we have an obligation to make a payment set by the actuary every year. Typically, we've taken the option of doing the big lump sum payment in July, and this year it'll be 16.7 million. And normally, that's advantageous to do that. But this year, it would be more prudent to hold on to our money as long as possible, to put it that way, and to break this up into monthly payments. Because at best, on an average year, CalPERS is estimated to do an assumed 6.8% return. And on short-term treasuries, we're thinking 6% is going to be the average amount for this year. So you only have 0.8% on what would be a CalPERS normal year. But it's, there's a lot of headwinds on equity markets, especially with a high interest rate environment. So more likely, the estimate is CalPERS would be lucky to do 3% to 4% next year. So we would otherwise have a loss. And so this helps protect our funds for the year. And so that's the intention.
Sounds good. Yeah, yeah, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And that's it, sir. I have nothing else. I don't see anybody jumping to their feet to rush to the podium, so I think we can call it.
Good. All right. So at this time, board will recess into closed session to consider the items on the agenda. And we will reconvene to report out following that.
Mr. President, I'll just make a note for the record. I received a word from our council on items B and C. There is no need to discuss those items, so we will only have item A on the agenda.
Thank you. So the regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We have no reportable action from our closed session. And with no further business, we are adjourned.